Trustee Kellogg.
I would tell you right now that having probably the most important interviews that we could possibly do, on the same day we have a board meeting.
It's the day before.
The 27th of Tuesday or Monday?
No, Monday.
The Monday.
That's why we changed it to 27th.
Thank you. Now, my question is going to be, though, last time, because people are, you're expecting people to take time away, it's at the campus, there are people activity going on. The last time, not a, wasn't a perfect scenario, but we met on a Saturday. The campuses closed, and you don't have the activity. It's a little more informal. So, I don't know personally, I would rather take a time where I know it's just, the whole point of taking an entire day Monday, if that's the choice in the majority, I will carve out the time, but I personally would have rather had it on a Saturday where it could just be a little bit easier on everybody and you can dedicate the time. It just seemed to work last time, so unless that is a date that everyone is, and this is the first time I've heard that that is the day. So, that's my only question. I, I don't know why you would want to do it. And then, I did have a follow-up question on the, I'll leave it at that for right now while my colleagues speak. I had a question on the, on the format for the forums, what we finally, what has been decided or what we as a, as a, I know it hasn't come before the ad hoc committee, so there's only two of us on that one. So, I'm half, and I haven't seen anything, so that's why it's news to me. So, I'll just stay with the 27th on however, whatever brought that about, but I would much rather have it on the Saturday where it just seems to be a little bit easier on all parties.
President Baxter. Yes, yes, trustee here.
I'd like to dovetail on trustee Kellogg's point. I think it's a very valid point. I wasn't aware of that as well. I was going to speak up about it. Saturday would be great, ideal, also for the confidentiality of it, it would be better contained. And I'd also like to understand, how many people are we going to be interviewing? I'm still...
We won't know.
Well, there's 29, and I, I thought we were going to get an update after we receive the applications on how many are going to be shortlisted by the...
Well, the committee isn't meeting until January 31st. They will decide who they're going to interview. They won't know who to forward to us till after February 21st. And part of, part of the situation about the timing is Saturday is the, is the 25th. So, those people, let's say on, on February 21st, you know, they decide on five people, those five people have to come on Saturday, the 25th. That's why we're giving them more time. I, I do not object to, but we don't know, we won't know till the 21st how many they're going to send to us.
Oh, okay. I just would like to have the op, the, at least the opportunity to go with a larger amount of shortlisted candidates, rather than out of 29, we just get five, and have the opportunity to interview more candidates. I've brought that up a few times. I think five or six out of 29 may be a little bit limited.
The only thing is sometimes, whatever this group decides is fine, but you also put people at risk of their college knowing, they're, they're looking at another school that, you know, if you interview 10 people, one of them's going to be selected. So, you have to think about that, and the person wants to have pretty good confidence, I would think, this is my opinion, that, that they have a good chance. If they know 10 people are being interviewed, you know, they have a 10 percent chance in getting the job. Trustee Otto, and I could be wrong, because I've never been on a selection committee. I've never applied to be president.
So, I, I have a couple other concerns, and I don't know if there's an answer to these concerns, but assuming that we're going to have somewhat illustrious candidates, meaning that they have good jobs, that they go there every day, and they have some experience in higher education, probably will be in high-ranking positions at other educational institutions. I think the idea that you can say to somebody on February 21st, "Congratulations, you're a finalist. You got four days to clear your calendar, get to California, and be interviewed, and by the way, get the lowest possible fare to get here," because we don't want to pay the exorbitant fares that you would have to have for the, to get here in four days, or maybe you could just drive, may create some difficulty. And I'm not suggesting that as a result of that, we, we do anything in particular, but it's something that needs to be taken into consideration. There are confidentiality issues that are always problems. There are confidentiality issues with regard to the candidates themselves and issues that it raises, there are confidentiality issues with regard to the process, and how the process is conducted that we need to steel ourselves for, because this process could blow up if confidentiality is not maintained, and we need to be reminded of that. So, again, I'm just not making any concrete suggestions, I'm just pointing out things in contrast to what some other people have said. I've been through this before. I've watched a process go and what it took to get a successful process done, not only at this level, but at this institution, and there are things that don't need to just be checked off a list, but need to be carefully considered to make this successful.
President Baxter.
Yeah, I guess, trustee Malou.
Quick question. Did we move up our timeline? My understanding, we were hoping to have an announcement sometime in March, and I still have the dates for 7th and 8th, the Commissals on that committee as well, for interviews within our search committee. Did we move that up?
Yes, and that was done at the November meeting, wasn't it, trustee Kellogg? See, we're, we're concerned, I couldn't speak for you, but I'll speak for myself. There are many, many openings in California, and that, not that many good candidates. If we wait till the end of March to decide, we could lose out on people who don't want to wait. I mean, I remember a long time ago, when I was offered a job at Long Beach City College, I was also in contention at Golden West. And I was going to go with whoever said, "You, you got a contract, congratulations." You know, so the natural human response is, you know, they're not going to turn down an offer from somebody else. These people are applying for a number of presidencies.
But I think that's a hypothetical question, and this is really an empirical question at this point, because we can answer the question of how many superintendent presidents or chancellor jobs there are out there, and we can probably, with some discretion and discernment, determine how many of our finalists might be connected with us, and I bet the number is small, not zero, but...
Yeah.
Well, yeah, and because, you know, if you're applying for several, and it's all, they're all going off at the same time, I would be, I mean, I don't think that's the way that we're, the person we're looking for is going to be working.
Okay.
Well, no, and I mean, there's only, there's only two other districts that are looking for a CEO, Ventura's looking for a chancellor, and South Orange is looking for a chancellor. They're in the same timeline as we are. We can probably connect with them and find out who's duplicating, but that's really not the important part. The important part to me right now is what, okay, I've heard some things, I'd like to clarify, and I'm a little bit disappointed in the fact that if I'm sitting on an ad hoc committee, generally what I like to do is bring recommendations to my fellow board members, that here is what we're looking at, and now I'm doing the reverse. I'm going, we're meeting on what day? I, this was not my recommendation, it wasn't my, it wasn't part of the discussion, how this date came about. So, now we have to clarify, I think, what, what day do we want to meet? I would personally rather, let's just start with the first, the issue, and that is for the, for this board to meet. I personally would rather be on a Saturday, not a day where the college is in session. So, that, that would be my first point to present to everyone, but I don't know where everyone else's timeline, maybe all of you got, you know, you, there was a discussion that I was not ready to...
There was an email.
Pardon me?
There was an email over a week ago.
We can't discuss this over email, because...
Yeah, no, but I'm just saying, when he said he hadn't heard about it, there was an email.
But just that point alone, if I'm on the ad hoc committee, and I'm not even aware of the email going out, there's a, you know, a famous line from a movie, "What we have here is a failure to communicate."
Right.
Why am I having this discussion? So, point is, if it is agreeable, let's start with the, let's sort of clean up the messes in aisle 1, 2, or 3. Are we going to have a meeting? Is it the, is it the direction of this board that they want to have a meeting on the 27th, which is a Monday? So, that's my first question. I would rather have it on a Saturday if we think that they can get the information to us, the committee, and then I'm going to follow up with another question, but I'll give my recommendations, but that would be my recommendation to the full board, and I'll just leave it at that for this item, this item alone.
President Baxter, I, I can't really commit to any of the dates, because I don't have the timeline. I mean, I could try to block it with my employer, but if it's a weekend, I support trustee Kellogg's point of view. I think it would, it would be very helpful for, at least my schedule, if it was on a weekend, on a Saturday.
Trustee Malou, do you have a preference?
No, I just want to know who the 29 applicants are. Can we get that listed?
Jeff will answer that.
Right?
Rose will answer that.
I think, I think that's what everybody wants to know. It doesn't matter when, you know, I'm at the pleasure of the board when you would like to meet. I will make myself available, it doesn't matter to me. But I just want to know who the 29 applicants are.
Could you answer?
You won't be hearing it here in public.
Well, you said it was 29, right? Yeah, that's, she's the one that said it, Jackie. Jackie said, "Thank you for letting us know it was 29."
You missed my introduction, Jackie.
So, my understanding is, I'm sorry Doug. Well, I was just going to say that, and I understand there's some recruitment still going on, so that's, it may not be final. I am still concerned, although I don't know how to address this concern, that if you say to three people, five people, more than five people, "Congratulations, you're a finalist, you've got to be in Long Beach in four days," and it's not so much that they couldn't get here, but it's, I probability they're mostly from California, but that they have to change their schedules, and having watched high-ranking administrators in the community college system and what their schedules are like, it's not easy to say, "I'm just going to drop everything and do this."
Can I make, yeah, can I make a proposal in that regard? I'm hearing Saturday seems to work for the board. The other alternative date is, is March 4th, but my question becomes, is that too far out for you?
Okay.
That's a Saturday.
Well, except for this, and that is since November, I have been telling people that I got to go to New York, and when can I go? And I...
And that's why we sent out the...
And I cleared dates with everybody. I go from the 1st of March to the 8th, it's business and otherwise, and I cleared this, so I am not available on the 4th. I'm sorry, if we would have had a discussion earlier, maybe things could have been different, but if it's going to be a Saturday, it can't be the 4th.
So, the other option, well, of course, you know, your first option is, is the 25th, but I'm hearing Doug's concern. The next option is March 11th.
I can't make March 11th. That works for me, yes.
The point was that individuals that, it's going to be a little bit of a crunch, they're not going to get the best airfare, if they do have to travel by air, especially if you're out of state, or you're probably not going to arrive. But nonetheless, it appears that that date is still with that, with that issue. And I would tell you, because of what this college is, even though there is a little bit of a, probably an inconvenience, if you will, if they did not have plans, hopefully they don't have a wedding or something like that, but the fact is, this is still Long Beach City College. And I would gather to speculate that most people that are looking to apply for this job, I know I would, that I would sort of drop everything, and not the first impression I'd get is that to the people that eventually may be hiring me, that, that's really not that convenient for me. So, I think that that issue, or valid, with the other options we have, that probably is the best date that can, that can do things. And so, I would just stick to that date, then the, what was it?
25th.
25th, which is a Saturday.
February.
The 25th?
Yeah, the 27th is a Monday, so the 25th is a Saturday.
And let me make a suggestion, if that's what you want to do. I think right now, you notify all 29 candidates and any more else that interviews would be on Fa, on Saturday, the 25th of February, and that they need to be available if they become a finalist.
Madam Chair, that, that was what I was going to suggest, is that we, the college sends out a "thank you for applying" notice, your application has been accepted, you will be notified if you make the final interview or preliminary interview process, and interviews will be on this date. One other thing we can do too, but I don't know how everybody else's time is, is let them know that, you know, it'll be on this date or this date, you know, if you have a preference or a conflict, let us know, but that might convolute the process, but at least give them a two and a half month heads up, that this is the date that we'll expect you to be here.
Yeah, that, that's anticipated to do on following January 31st, when the committee makes their selection of those individuals that are going to be interviewed, that group of people will be informed what the upcoming dates are, and to save the date just in case they arrive at that point.
Trustee Otto.
There's another problem to be worked out, and that is, so, just like they don't like to have sentencing before the trials, if you interview everybody on the 25th, and then you have the public forums on the 27th, they do that?
I just didn't see that as a problem.
They have the public forums after this election? That was, I was getting to that one next. Oh, I'm all ears.
Wait, wait a second. The public forums would be for the finalists. We will have interviewed on Saturday, the 25th.
So, the, so the idea is that we interview everybody, and then there are public forums, and then we vote after that?
Correct. And think, and think about it this way, again, if you are from out of state, you're not making two trips here. You're coming on Saturday, and you're staying Monday.
That would make me pick it right then, if I was applying, if I could save that trip.
President Baxter?
Yes.
What I'm understanding is that the search committee's interviewing these people on the 21st, right?
Correct.
On Tuesday. They're coming back that same Saturday.
Correct.
Staying for three days to do, if they do fit the forums on the Monday, Tuesday, within a one-week time span?
Yes.
What we're trying to push?
Right now.
You know, it's, it's at the pleasure of the board, however they want to set these up, so ultimately, this is a discussion they're having right now.
And that's why we're discussing, trustee Kellogg.
Yeah, I, again, I apologize, because again, I would have liked to give everyone recommendations on why we are doing it, to the point that trustee Otto brought up, is that is a very unusual process to have the open forums, and I'm even going to get to that point in a moment after this point, but the idea of the forums, with the different constituent groups, the goal is to have those, and there's a couple ways it can be dealt with, but I'm going to leave that to the next subject matter, but the idea is to have the, this, these public meetings with the different constituent groups of the college community, where then they can go to their representatives of the search committee, the 21 members, and then they would be able to come up with a list of whatever it is, three, four, five, that then they recommend to the board to interview. If that is the process we follow, which is customarily what you do, then these interviews, public, public forums, whatever you want to call them, would take place prior to February 25th. It makes sense, because the next step after the meeting, the meeting on the 25th of the Board of Trustees, which is going to be, it's going to be a posted, I believe, it's a closed session.
Yeah, it has to be posted.
So, the, the goal to come out of that meeting is, we are going to have a selection of who the next superintendent president of this college will be. That's the point of it, to do it, to have our meeting, we're then trying to do what? We are not really trying to finalize it, because after that meeting, is we're going to have then the public meeting, the way it is scheduled right now, which is, for lack of a better term, it's just a, I didn't want to use the term I was going to use.
Yeah, I know what you're going to use. Well, I guess that's why the, the forums were going to be on the 27th. And it, and again, it would be just a couple of forums, it would not...
Okay, so, but now to the, to the issue of when is going to be the forums for the different constituent groups of the college at large? We have a date of the Saturday, the 25th, that we, as a governing board, are going to be meeting with the finalists, and then we will come up with, when we leave that meeting, to the famous line of a former trustee here, Tom Clark, who looked at us all during the last process and said, "I'm not leaving here till we have a superintendent president." I think that for, the point is, well taken, that's how I'm looking at this, but I would believe that the community meetings for these finalists that are selected by the search committee, 21 members, would take place prior to that, regardless if they come back and forth. So, my recommendation would be to move that cal, that, that timeline forward to when they would meet. Now, whether they're here a few days, or it's a week before, because again, if they have the community forums, then the search committee, after having those, can make the recommendations to us, that means that search committee of 21 members have to meet again.
The search committee, the forums were going to be after the search committee, not before.
After.
And people cannot go back to the search committee and say, "You wanted Susie, but now we want Mary." The search committee will give us the names of who they want to go to the, the forums and to go to the board for interview.
President Baxter, I, I'm confused. So, what is the purpose of the public, public meetings then?
Well, under the old rule, the public meetings were the 27th.
No, I understand that, but going back to trustee Kellogg's point, so this, we appointed 20, a 22-member committee.
Right.
Who are going to bring us the recommendations of who we interview.
Correct.
Now, in between this, we want to put in a public meeting, public forum, to do what?
Normally, there's a series of questions that are asked of each candidate.
From the public, before they ask us?
I hate to tell you this...
Let me, yes.
Rose, go ahead.
Historically, in, in the last, for example, the last presidential selection process that was undertaken here in 2006, there were candidate forums. Each candidate comes forward to, comes forward, and each one answers the same question. The, the campus community is invited. This is an opportunity for them to hear the candidates speak publicly and to answer a certain set of questions. And so, individuals at the end of that will be given an evaluation sheet, will be able to put down their comments, and that gets forwarded to the board. So, you're able to get the input of the community.
Not, not just the 22-member?
No, no, no. This is for everybody.
Okay. So, it, it's essentially, it augments the 22-member candidate's recommendation? Or is it, is it the, the people they've recommended that go to the public forums and they're, okay?
It, it is input from the campus community regarding each individual candidate. So, you'll be able to get a take on how they have viewed these individuals, and you can take it as input. Ultimately, it is the decision of the board as to who their best candidate is.
I understand, and so that goes of, I would agree with trustee Kellogg then, and those, those meetings need to happen prior to the 25th, and this needs to get calendarized, so that we have all that before we interview these folks.
And I agree with that too, but this is the dilemma we're now in. If we do that, and we still, because everybody agreed upon it for the, for the election committee, that they would make their decision on the 21st, and we've had trouble getting everybody into the room, it would make most sense to change that date, move it back, so that you're not saying, "Congratulations, you're five finalists, you got three days to get here." Now, maybe you can go away with that, and maybe you don't have to change the date of the 21st, which is what we've told everybody all along, but...
But I, I thought that we're going to tell them at the end of January to save the date for February 25th, and the, presumably for the public meeting before then. So, they will know well ahead of time.
That they might be finalists, and, and that this is all going to happen in less than a week.
Yeah, on these, I'll, I'll tell you one thing, if, if it's difficult getting five members of the board to set on a date, you can imagine how difficult it would be to reschedule 22 people. Trying to find February 21st, like, was like threading a, finding a needle in a haystack.
So, you could, if I might add a suggestion here, if the committee is going to make their finalist selections on the 21st, you could conceivably have the campus forums on the 23rd. You would let the candidates know who are being interviewed, that campus forums will be on the 23rd, and that final interviews would be on the 25th. So, basically, what you're saying is make your res, travel reservations now and stay in Long Beach from the 21st through the 25th.
Yeah, that makes sense. To me, if I were a candidate, I'd rather take one trip than two trips.
It's not a perfect science, only because after February 21st, from the individuals that we interview, only X amount are going to go forward.
Right.
So, lucky those X amount, the others will obviously have to cancel anything they've got scheduled.
We're, we're trying to be as accommodating as possible, and this is the best we can do.
Yeah.
Okay, is there, is there a reason why we're having a day in between? I mean, you know, from the 21st, 23rd, 25th, could we just knock it out, 21st, 22nd, 23rd? Just in terms of, because, you know, these candidates are going to have to get here, have a hotel reservation, have food expenses, maybe a rental car. If we could make it a little easier for them in terms of, you know, budget and expenses, I'm sure, you know, maybe they can afford it, but still, we have to be a little sensitive to that. If we do the, the 21st, which is already set, the public hearing on the 22nd, and then do the interviews on the 23rd, you know, they know they're going to be here those three days, period, and then they can fly out on the 23rd.
We're having it on the 25th, the finalists.
Or...
Is that, that's Saturday.
Is that set? That can't be...
Well, it's up to the board. It's up to the board to decide when you want to interview.
I thought we had a consensus of February 25th, Saturday, February 25th, for our interviews.
Based on what I'm hearing, my, I would prefer the 24th for, excuse me, the 23rd, only because I've got pretty hard to change plans on the 24th, and this is the first time this has come up.
Okay, so you said not the public forums on the 23rd?
Yeah, and then it could be there for a day. I think there's a lot of information to review. I'm going to presume that we're going to have written materials at least by, shortly after the 21st, so that we can review that stuff before we interview people on the 25th, and it's only three to five people or whatever, but it's a...
That's a very good point. See, we're going to have to be able to look at the applications. So, I think trying to do it the next day would be really difficult.
It's not the next day, because they're going to pick however many people on the 21st, and then I think we can get the written materials right away.
Right.
I, and then you're going to have, you have public forums, and then...
On the 23rd.
Final interviews, right.
And then final interviews on the 25th.
President Baxter?
Yes.
Just a quick question. Maybe I'm just not too familiar with super...
Maybe I'm just not too familiar with superintendent president searches, but is the usual timeline of the exiting of a former superintendent president and the hiring of one usually two months? Because to me that, maybe that just seems really fast. I've had to wait for a part-time job for three months, this just sounds ridiculous.
Well, no, the person wouldn't take office till July 1st. It's the idea that you would know, okay, my job will start July 1st.
And trustee...
Was that the answer to your question?
I think what he's looking for, trustee Lamalle, is, the board's concern is that if we don't move on this quickly, we could lose quality candidates who get picked up by other districts who are currently in selection process.